Mm-hmm. And when they get here, it's kind of sad. I mean, that's what you're working at.
I know. Because it's just like that. You think, wow, where did they go?
Life is pretty short.
I know, I know. Yeah, so he'll be thirteen in just a couple days on the twenty-sixth.
Can you unmute?
She was born on my dad's birthday.
Let me test your audio.
Yeah. I went in on the day before and he kept on saying, if you leave tonight, I said, no, hey.
No, actually, she couldn't.
Say one night.
Uh-huh. Yeah, she's born at like one forty in the morning. Yeah, on his birthday. So he was a little bow school. He's a proud. That's okay.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Um, but that's special for him.
Yeah, it's tiny.
Okay.
She does now. But it's a good June twenty-sixth, so it's a good day. And we have several people in our family.
I can. Yeah, it's almost like our pictures are too good. They're too good to try to email them about cyberspace.
I wish there was a way that you could kind of do a. Do this all.
You can, but if we can't see them.
I like it that way.
I got started, I couldn't stop.
It's really good.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, okay, never mind.
So when does this start, Matt?
I don't know. Just say, I was trying to think of the other one a lot.
We need to. Your camera.
We'd have to say like this.
It's a good.
Alrighty. The next thing on our agenda is to adopt the agenda, item two. This is a special board meeting, so we really can't change or add anything to the agenda. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Item three, Ms. Carrie said there's really no discussion under there, so we're going to go onto item four. It's discussion review, A, cyber insurance review, Bayou Meter Insurance. Travis Theodore can join in virtually, so you might have to turn your pairs around to be able to see Travis. But Travis, thank you for joining us.
Thank you all for having me this afternoon. I wanted to kind of go over a few things, just, you know, we had presented some numbers to Ms. Carrie this potential last month on the cyber liability insurance. And obviously, we just have to look at the news right now to see kind of what's going on in our country and that tax we're getting hit by across, you know, nationwide. And school districts are also getting hit nationwide as well that we're just not actually reading about on Fox News or CNN or news stations of that stature. The main thing that you see out there, if you see the ransomware and getting paid out, having to pay off these cyber attacks to come in to release our information. And so what is happening is, is that they're not really going into the full depth of the total cost that goes into what will happen if you have a cyber liability attack on our school district. And one of the things is it's just not paying the ransom, it's also paying the notification cost for all the privacy that has taken you, uh, they get hit with. Just recently, in Broward County, Florida, the cyber attack came in and made, it made us forty million ransomware. Obviously, school district did not have forty dollars in coverage, they didn't pay anything, and when these cyber attacks would be sold. Cyber terrorists did, they pub thousands of private information online about students, teachers, everything across the board that obviously we would not want to get, that we would not want to hit any kind of online website. Also, I don't know if you guys saw, two years ago, I believe, 2018, Scott County got hit with a three point seven billion dollar, what they call a social engineering claim. And what that meant was is that somebody came in and ghosted the finance director's computer, went in and made a fraudulent receipt bill per seven day, it automatically got sent out. The three point seven billion got sent out, it was, did not go to the vendor they thought it was going to. Now, they were able to recover that, but it was a very stressful one to two week period for them to try to get that back. And that's a rarity that they were able to get that back. So, so, but I just want to lay out there is right now, we have no cyber liability insurance that protects us. So if we get hit with an attack from, from these terrorists, and it's happening every single day. I don't think it's anything we can avoid for. We're not, we're no longer, well, this isn't going to hit our radar. It is on the radar. I would venture to say that every single teacher or employee in Rockcastle School District, there's probably two to three attacks that we don't even know about, from emails, from phishing schemes, to anything of nature that, that we're getting hit with, or trying, somebody's trying to infiltrate our computer system. If we don't set something up to protect ourselves, we could look at a situation where we have no coverage. And right now, across the country, on the email that I sent out to the school board, is that right now, there's an average claim paid out about two hundred thousand dollars. Now, that's, you know, that'd be money that we would, that we would not have right now to protect ourselves without having a cyber liability insurance policy. And I had sent out the numbers for you guys to review. There's three different quotes for a million dollars in coverage, two million and three million. And, and I just wanted to kind of go through that real quick. And, you know, just appreciate the time, and I'm open to any questions you guys have about this potential coverage. I believe that school board needs to seriously consider purchasing for, for Rockcastle County.
Is, is there nothing in place by the state that does protection for money?
There, there is not. That's a great question. There is currently not right now. It, it's a very good question. That's because like anybody else, we Google things all the time, right? So leading up to this meeting, I did see that the government is trying to set the sun for this. And it's not currently set up as, as, as it is right now. So there's nothing backed by the state that protects it at this moment. Is that coming down the pipeline? I believe it possibly could, but that's going to have to depend on the, uh, what somebody is seeing to vote on, to vote on, vote that through.
Do you have any questions?
What, what kind of comments do we receive from KDE as far as the folks in technology? Travis?
What was that? Sorry, Mr. Hammond.
Have you, have you heard anything? Have you had any conversation or has anyone in here? I just wonder what kind of advice or comments KDE makes in regards to cybersecurity.
I, I have not, Mr. Hammond. Or, or have any insurance consult, uh, conversation from the KDE as far as what the amount that each school should purchase? Um, or, or even the recommendations of school boards to, to purchase it. That, that's something I'm not familiar with on that side of things. I just know we don't have the coverage for it. And if something was to happen on, in any type of situation, if we were to be shut down, um, or if you guys were not able to be at school, or had to keep kids away, you know, not be able to bring them to school, or in a situation where they get held as ransom on certain things, we would not have the coverage for that. State would not back that up.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm going to say this, uh, totally new territory for everybody.
It, it's, it's, it is totally, it is new territories. And it's really started, you know, really started hitting up during the COVID period. Two thousand twenty was obviously a unique year as it was, you know, with COVID. But there's been, they're going to end up predicting over six trillion in payment, in payments as far as to cyber, um, cyber attacks, and just in the U.S. These are very, they're, these are no longer folks that we think about that are just randomly doing this. These are, these are, these are folks that are going to MIT, these are professionals that know what they're doing and how to collect this money. Currently, right now, we have no ways of getting that back and, and investigating and putting these people in jail and then doing the best that we need to do. They, they kind of have us right now, and, and it's, we're seeing it, we're just seeing it every day as far as complaints being paid, ransom, ransom being paid, and they're having to to get their, get their private information back. And it's just not the bigger companies. But I think it's what I want to come across today to the school board and to, uh, to, to Rockcastle County as a whole is, it's no longer just what we're reading about the news with Colonial Pipeline or here recently, the meat processing company. Uh, just recently, CNA Insurance had to pay a forty million dollar ransom to get their private information back. They were shut down for two weeks. It's, so it's, it's becoming a situation where it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to stop them once they get in. And even if you do, you just pay the ransom, you pay a little bit, we're able to get it back. It's the other things that come along with it that we have to, that you have to pay as far as a forensic investigation. So by law, you have to send in a, get sent into the attorney general that you've been hit by a cyber attack because of privacy information, because of HIPAA. And so you have to send that in to them, and they have to do a forensic report. And depending on the county's personal records that Rockcastle County School District has, just to throw out a ballpark figure, um, if we were to have fifty thousand private records, and that can date all the way back to pre, you know, not just now, but all the way back to sort of all the private information we have, it could be upwards of four hundred thousand dollar claim just because of the credit monitoring you have to do, and that with the case in, the fines, um, everything that comes across when you have that potential situation. Somebody may know where our person is. And I know we probably have some of the best IT as far as to protect this in that situation. But I think what we have to learn through all of what we've seen in the, in the country so far is that even have the best IT doesn't, and it still cannot infiltrate and, and grab that data, and it's something we just don't want them to have. And Mr. Hammond, to your point on the KD, I do, I do think part of it is, I think a lot of it is, I think a lot of school districts think they're backed by the state and think that they can step in and help. And currently, right now, that is not set up, and we don't know when that will be set up. Uh, I did read today that they're trying to put five hundred million dollars set aside for school districts across the country. It's just, it's going to have to take a, you know, a vote to do so, so we don't know when that will happen.
No.
Some tool, if you guys had that.
And I understand, and didn't expect KDE to do any, uh, anything of the line. I just wondered if they made any comments, because they make a lot, you know, out of David Katz's arena. Usually, there's some advice on some, but I, I appreciate what you said, Travis, and I, and I would agree with it.
I was just curious how many, um, school districts that you, sorry, Mr. Hammond, can tell you?
Well, how much insurance? Uh, we insure over sixty-five school districts across the state. And currently, right now, it's sad to say that it's that we've, we've, we presented almost sixty-five quotes to school districts. As far as the number that's actually purchased it, I, I don't have those numbers in front of me. Um, of the ones I work with, um, with you being you guys and two others, um, I do know this year, another one of my school districts, they are seriously considering purchasing, that the cyber liability is back on the agenda. Their meeting is not until third meeting in June though. In the Scott County situation, just so you know, we actually insure Scott County, and went through that situation with, with them. And they literally just that month before had purchased that cyber liability insurance. Um, and so it was good timing for them, and, and, and they, they almost turned it down, but they ended up voting for it. And it would have, would, they didn't have three point seven on social engineering, but it would have paid, it did pay for all the forensic report that they had to do to, um, make sure that no privacy information was, was taken. And so it, it's really that cost right there is the biggest cost that we see. It's not necessarily having to pay that ransom, it's all the costs that come in behind it. Even the smallest claims can be thirty to forty grand, just because you have to, you have to run that forensic report to make sure that they give you their private information.
And it's happened here before at the hospital, two years ago, so it's not like it's far away. And that was just a logistical mess, like every computer, people lost the stuff they had for years and years just to have to go back and tidy everything up. It's a lot of work.
CNA Insurance did not have access to their phones, their email, or their computers for two weeks. They're just, everything by paper.
From a technical standpoint.
We were having tapes.
Their party. Protect the gift that is based on a user, so ransomware would be something, a user clicked on a link. The only way you can stop it is with education. If we do that, I don't just staff every year and say, here's what we do for security. There's a security plan, I think ESPN board approved in July and August every year. So we do what we can, but virus, virus protection doesn't stop it, you can't stop it. Because you essentially give permission for it to, you saw it might be an ad, it looks like something else. Um, it, it might be a pretty picture of a bouquet of flowers, and then you click on it, and it does really bad things. Um, that's just, that's just the way it is. And there's, there's just nothing, there's no way to really stop it other than education. And for that, you should understand, even I see links like that that are bad sometimes, that, that you don't, you just, it's, it's hard. There's not a good thing. That's what.
The one thing that, yeah, I, I, there's two stories, there's two stories, I'm trying, I think I'll get a big step, but I think the one in Florida, the how they got in Broward County was that a teacher downloaded just some personal files. Not, nothing bad, just, you know, I think some, just download Microsoft Word or something, and that's how they were able to infiltrate the system. One, uh, one of my customers here recently, um, in East Kentucky, they, we proposed, they didn't purchase it, and three weeks later, he's calling me up, a previous employer, he didn't do it, somehow somebody hacked into his computer system, um, and got into his account, it was perhaps an employer employee. And that's how they're able to infiltrate their system and hold their stuff ransom. And, and what was crazy about that was all they wanted was a thousand bucks, and they paid it and released it and whatnot. So it's, it's, it's random, but at the same time, um, they're very meticulous on how, on how they shadow your computers. They just don't randomly go and say, okay, we're going to go after Rockcastle County school board, and we're trying to, you know, see if I can get this teacher to, to open up a link. That's not how it goes. They shadow computers, they look at the emails, the types that you send from, you know, Miss Jenny or, 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 you know, Miss, anybody within there in the Rockcastle School District, they, they shadow those emails. They look at invoices, how can they manipulate those? How can they get in to ACH transfer, which can get you to transfer money to, to that account? Um, that's one of the big, another bigger claim that we see in, in cyber side of things.
Thank you, Travis, for your time. I know you're on vacation, and I appreciate you taking the time to join us tonight. Thank you.
You all are very, you all are very welcome, very seeing you all.
Thank you, Travis.
Y'all, y'all have a good day.
Okay, um, Ms. Jenny, do you have anything you want to add to this?
We wanted to bring this information, um, to you to, to be an informative piece and ultimately to, um, you know, give the board the decision to take the insurance for, you know, to wait. We have had some conversations with Travis regarding this insurance for several years and have felt like that, you know, with the securities that we have within the district and the state that, um, that we were, you know, covered. But, you know, since then, there have been several school districts, um, and he mentioned Scott County. Scott County did have, um, and, you know, that was in the news. So we felt like it was important to bring this information to you, to bring, um, a proposal and, and let you decide, moving forward, if we would elect to take that. So it's on the agenda for tomorrow night. Um, the premium quote, um, just for information, you know, we're looking at a little over six thousand dollars for some coverage, you know, that would at least cover us if we had to do forensics and have someone represent us should, um, a cyber attack, you know, occur.
How much would that pay out, like, with that quote?
There are a couple of different limits. Um, there's a two million dollar limit. With a ten thousand retention, it's a little over nine thousand. Three million with a twenty-five thousand dollar retention is a little over ten. And we can talk a little bit more about, you know, the real specifics of that, um, tomorrow evening, if you like. But, you know, they have had experience and, and they have the individuals that are the experts in working through, these type of situations that, you know, would be helpful to us, um, you know, should, should that occur. Um, there are many things that we do in finance to safeguard ourselves. And, and we do very few, um, ACH transfers. You know, we do lots of, um, checking, uh, with our staff to ensure that, um, I asked Trent over the weekend about, um, an individual that he had utilized, um, you know, for graduation. I'm like, okay, you know this person, you know, um, and, and that's to protect us, to protect our dollars, that it wasn't, you know, a random invoice. Um, so we do, um, have lots of steps that we go through, um, to safeguard against that. But, you know, things do happen, um, and we felt like it was important to give you the information and let you make that decision. So it will be on the agenda for tomorrow night.
This would be coverage throughout the entire district, right? Even like students? I mean, I, I don't know if, could, could there be any access through a Chromebook or anything to?
So you could click on links somehow and share that, but it's more limited with a Chromebook than with a desktop. It'd be more, more, more limited with a Chromebook than with a desktop or Windows PC. Most of the downloads of text are designed for Windows PCs, not.
I just watched this on the news before I came. This is a huge thought. This is in the media big time right now. I don't know much, but I did.
Does anybody else have any questions that they'd like to ask? Alright, thank you much. We'll talk more about it tomorrow. Item four B, guaranteed energy savings contract, G E S C with a C M T A. Mr. Clark?
Okay, we've got, uh, a lot of documents and a contract uploaded to, uh, four B for the meeting tonight. The interconnection package contract, the draft contracts of the guaranteed energy savings. The plans and specs are also in there. You guys, I'm sure have had a chance to review them, but it's pretty lengthy. Um, Mr. Brian Mason, I'm going to turn it over to him and let him speak to the, to the particulars on it a little bit, and then if we have questions at the end, we'll go over them.
And not, not to minimize what you were just talking about, but this is a much happier subject. We are very excited about this project, uh, even from the very beginning when we came and, and spoke to a few and with an opportunity assessment, we were very confident that this was going to be good for the district. Uh, but after we have done all of our work and our bidding, uh, we are very convinced that this is a very good thing for the district. Uh, even in this very competitive bidding, uh, you know, scenario or this environment, uh, bits came in very good on all of the, uh, the items, all the, the vendors, the contractors. And so we were able to get a project together, four point two million dollars, if you were able to see that, uh, the performer on our contract, a four point two million dollar project that is funded by a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar general fund contribution, uh, and then, uh, some SFCC contribution that, I guess this was a kind of a use or lose type scenario. So that was able to be brought into the table, and then the rest of the project is funded by savings. Now, with all that said, our performer, uh, shows, uh, almost a one hundred percent funded by savings project. But in reality, uh, it will be much heavier on savings. Uh, and so the guarantee, we have this, is that like a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year as a guarantee. But, uh, we expect, um, much more than that as far as the savings. And so we don't show that in a performer like this because KDE would sort of frown upon that in the sense that we showed a hundred and sixteen percent funded from savings, but that's really what we're looking at here. I mean, when this is all said and done, it's almost as if the SFCC money is just being transferred right into your general fund. So, uh, this is a, very much a win-win for this district. We can go into the contract. If anybody has any questions, I can talk about the scope. If anybody is, uh, unclear about what the scope of the project. Uh, actually, with the bidding that we did come, come back with, we were able to do more scope than we had originally anticipated. So Mount Vernon will also be getting some data system upgrades as well as a fire system upgrades. Again, all of that's going to be taken care of by the savings of the project. So, any, do you want me to go ahead and just talk about the scope?
Yeah.
The scope is, essentially, we've got, of course, the Mount Vernon HVAC renovation, which we intend to replace the fluid cooler this October during fall break. Uh, again, that's something Trent, uh, has shown us, and obviously, the, that unit is needing to be replaced and really expecting that we didn't. and really, uh, expecting that we didn't want to wait until next summer to do that. So it actually, again, helps this, the project, the contractor gave us a deduct, uh, for doing that work in October instead of having to try to do all of that work next summer. So again, that was kind of a win for us. I mean, that was a ten thousand dollar deduct for their price to do that work in October and, and the fall break. So we're, we're gonna try to do as much of that work as we can, uh, you know, not only the fluid cooler, but maybe some more of that, uh, as well, uh, during that, that period of time. But this summer, we intend to put, uh, bipolar ionization in all of the H V A C across the district. Um, that is, uh, again, that's a very important point, I know, for you, uh, to have, to be able to communicate that to your students and to your staff. Uh, and so that is, uh, hopefully, we're gonna be getting that, you know, again, as, if things continue to progress, as we hope that they will, through K D E approval and so on and so forth, that we can come to a contract, a signed contract, maybe mid-July and start that work. Uh, we have got, gotten contractors involved that say that they will be able to do that work before school starts. And so that's, that's something that we're really trying very hard to do that, uh, in that, that short period of time. The other, uh, point, a couple of other things that we're gonna try to do this summer is, uh, putting solar at the high school. It's a little less than a hundred KW solar array at the high school, which again, funds some additional scope. Uh, and so we felt that that was economically savvy for the project, that's how we have presented that from, from the get-go. Uh, also gonna be doing some retrocommissioning of the controls at the high school. We feel like that that building is not operating, uh, quite too up to where it could, and that is some missed opportunities. So we're, we're gonna try to get that building in a little bit better, uh, you know, trying to get that more efficient, and again, using those savings for our project. And then finally, and this is a, a big point, is the lighting for the, for the summer. Uh, so all of the buildings, with, with the exception of the high school that is already LED, uh, will be getting LED lighting, even this building as well. Uh, all of the, all the buildings except for the A T C, of course, that is not being, uh, I guess you guys don't pay for the utilities there. Although, in this project, we are going to be replacing some of the site lighting so that it will be uniformly LED outside of the high school. We're not taking any credit for any of the savings of that in the project, but that is, uh, additional, uh, additional scope that is part of the project. And that, so that's all this year, and then next year, the proposal is for us to do, uh, an entire H V A C renovation and replacement at Mount Vernon.
I wasn't thinking it was gonna be done this summer.
The H V A C will be next summer, there's just not enough time to get that project designed and to get all the, you know, the, the equipment and all of that in. But the lighting will be done this summer, bipolar ionization, and then the cooling tower in October.
Can that cooling tower be completed over a four-day weekend?
Yes, well, uh,
We have four weeks.
Okay, four weeks. Oh, wow.
I was talking about the, about the cooling tower. I took a short video of it today, I took a bigger one the other day. Um, uh, Brandon, will you, will you show that to them? Make it big, where they can see it. If you'll watch, you'll see water dripping from that thing. I mean, it's just, it's corroded and, uh, it's, it's an immense dire need for place. It's under that twenty-four seconds. Any chemicals used in water?
Where is this located over there?
It's in Mount Vernon, in the boiler room, in the mechanical room, yeah, or, where the, the, uh, coal, the coal-fired boiler used to be.
Yeah, and there's, you know, this is, uh, actually fantastic for this unit to still be in operation. I, I think that's actually kudos to the district as far as taking care of that. This is from the original building, and so it, it's really incredible to see that. It almost needs to go into a, a museum, really. It's, uh, I, that excites me to see a unit that's lasted that long. And of course, what we, we're gonna, we have designed around a, uh, an exact replacement, which will make that very easy to take out. It's the same brand that you're, uh, used to. Uh, actually, it's enhanced in the sense that we're gonna do stainless steel basin, uh, so it's, it's gonna be, uh, even less corrosive in that environment, uh, for the unit that we had specified, so.
Now, you mentioned solar panels at the high school. What percentage will that run or put back in? Did you mention solar panels at the high school?
Yes. Yeah, now, as far as, what we're trying to accomplish is not really trying to generate funds through the solar. Okay, so from K U and really solar in general, there's not really, there's no benefit to overproduce on that. So, a- and, and again, without getting tremendously into the weeds, K U has a, uh, they have something that's called a small qualifying facility and then a large qualifying facility. And so when we originally looked at this project, we were looking at maybe putting in a hundred and thirty-eight KW. Again, that is not putting that into like a net zero type scenario by any stretch of the imagination. But we wanted to put in enough where it would produce enough savings that would, would be less than a twenty-year payback, which of course then adds value to this project. Now, we have gone down in size because K U has this small qualifying facility rate. And what that is, and again, I, I may not be the best person, we have a solar team that would maybe be a little bit better to, to describe this. But K U has, has rates for overproduction, and when you're in that small qualifying facility, it is, uh, it is something that is, uh, more stable. When it gets into the higher, it's, it's not as. So my solar team advised me, hey, let's, let's make this smaller, let's, let's put them in the small qualifying facility so that that is something that's not really a mystery for you all. Uh, it, I don't know what that is right off the top of my head. I think it's like two cents a K W H overproduction, and, and so it's, it's very small. You know, I mean, it, you're paying almost ten cents a K W H, they're gonna give you two for any overproduction, so it really doesn't make any sense to overproduce, if, if that, does that answer your question?
No.
No.
You wanna know how much it puts back into the high school? It's about ten percent. It's gonna, it's gonna cover about ten percent of the energy needed at the high school.
That, okay. That was my question.
Okay, all right, you shouldn't just hit me.
Where would those be placed at?
Uh, on the gym roof.
On the gym?
On the highest point.
I don't even know, see it from the ground.
Yeah, and, and one thing, if I can add, uh, we, we have talked to, uh, Ms. Carey about, uh, and, and we were carrying the cost of including a large screen TV that we were gonna put in, like, the kiosk or, uh, like in the foyer area or something like the entrance. So that we have, in the system that we, that you all would be getting, the inverters and so on and so forth, there's data, and there's a package there that allows us to show a dashboard of what is actually taking place on the roof. So it will always show, like, you know, how much it's producing, it'll show how many trees are being saved. Again, sort of a, a visual so that the students, staff, and everyone that comes into the building can see what you've done on the roof.
Okay, K U's effort is not promoting this a whole lot. I mean, the return, I mean, that's, that's unfortunate.
That's correct, yeah. And, and the unfortunate thing is that the, they continually trying to get laws that make it harder for solar to make sense for project, and that just, you know, again, we can get on the soapbox on that, but it's, uh, uh, it's, it's unfortunate. We're, we're doing solar in a lot of places, but really Kentucky is not, not one of those. Uh, it, it's not as easy. But one of the things that made it attractive for Rock Castle County was the rate that you're on, the, uh, all-electric school rate, and the fact that the high school had a very new roof as of twenty eighteen, I believe it was. So for those reasons, that made that a good candidate for that, for this project.
Trent, are you confident in, you know, I could read all of this and I probably still not gonna understand it, but are you confident in?
The contract?
Yes.
Yeah, hundred percent. I've read it all.
I figured you had.
And I've seen, I've, I've, I've brought Brian out, talking to him on the phone back and forth, just as I pick up on something, and, um, it's a, that is just a draft, and I mean, we can change things in it, but, um, one thing that concerned me was the set points in the building because, I mean, we're after comfort. After all, we, we don't want, we don't want kids to be uncomfortable in the classroom, but, um, we went back and forth on that, but we've got, we've got room in there to go, plus minus four degrees on what it says, so, uh, we can set it exactly like it is now in time, so. I mean, every concern I had, we worked through and I'm confident it's a, it's good for our Castle County kids, it's good for our Castle County schools.
All right, uh, so when this gets approved, the, the actual work will start July?
We hope. Uh, then it will be in K D E's hands. So basically, i- if, if this is adopted tomorrow evening, then Trent, I guess conceivably mon- uh, Wednesday morning, you would go on to and send that documentation up to K D E. That then allows us to upload an enormous amount of data, the contract, the plans and specs, we have a hundred-year floodplain, we have, uh, BG twos, all of that is, is then uploaded, an, an R F P proposal. Uh, although you didn't go that route, we still have to do that, and we have done that, we have actually put one together. So all of that then gets submitted to K D E, and then we wait and hope that they will look at that and review it and be able to get back to us, uh, with haste, uh, so that we can start to work. And again, the idea is, and what we have been trying to work towards, is mid-July to be able to get the contract signed, approved from K D E, to get you all to sign it, and then we'd be kind of off to the races.
I guess my other question I have, uh, so at the end of this work, there's not gonna be any hidden costs? That, no, okay, because almost, you know, how any type of project goes, there's always seems to be some hidden costs somewhere.
And there are no change orders, and that is something that we, we take very much pride in. I mean, we, we have worked with our subs, we've worked with our vendors, they understand how that's supposed to work. We are duty-bound to have contingency in the contract, so that's not something we're gonna come to you all and nickel and dime you for change orders on this project.
That's the beauty of this, this contract process. I mean, it's, everything's upfront. Nothing's hidden.
And then in a year, I'll be coming back and doing a M and B report, measurement verification, and I'm, you know, we expect that everybody will be smiling then, because the savings are gonna be more than what we even anticipated, uh, after year one and year two, after we do all of our construction. So, uh, it, this is, this is one of those that, uh, everybody in the office says they wish that they had a project that worked out this way financially. It's, it's just an incredible win-win for, uh, for, for this district from a financial standpoint.
And, and the work that we're gonna accomplish in the project too, I think. I think it'll be super beneficial for classrooms and teachers, kids, everybody.
Any questions?
Uh, not for Mr. Mason, but at the top, thinking about the two twenty-five from the general fund is, has any consideration been given to using S R funds for that? I mean, that's what we're looking to do.
Yes, we originally, um, looked at purchasing the bipolar ionization with S R funding. However, since that time, we discovered that if we use any federal funds as part of this project, um, the, is it Mavis Beacon? Davis Beacon will apply to the entire project. Um, so for that reason, um, we would like to use general fund, um, because we would not want to, that to apply to, um, the entire project. That would, that would drastically change, um, the cost of the project overall.
So would that be something that we can do when we do the HVAC system in the summer next year? Could we use those funds?
No.
It's all packed, yeah.
Okay. So, you know, we will be able to work with that, and, you know, there may be something else that we can utilize, um, those federal funds for that, you know, general fund can pick this up.
With, you had asked, what was, I ca- I got confused, don't take much to confuse me. You'd asked, uh, he corrected you on something, what was that exactly?
It, it has, and I'm sure they can explain it much easier than I can, but it has to do with wage per hour.
Right. It's the Davis Bacon Act, which is very old. I, I forget exactly, I think it may be from.
Prevailing wage law.
Okay, okay, I was, I was confused, I didn't know what you were talking about first, okay.
Anything federal funds are used, has to use that wage scale, which is not typical for our, you know, this type of project, which would, you know, essentially turn the thing sideways. I mean, it just really would, would negatively impact it if you used the S R funds even in that small amount, and that's what, and, and maybe they can speak to it a little bit more. That's one of the things that, as we've been talking to the school districts, no one really has a real good clear idea of how it's to be used. It's good that there's money there, but it's how do you do it? How do you use it? And so, uh, and that was something that actually Keith told me the other day, that if you use it for just part of the project, you have to use it for all of the project. That would really negatively impact this. So, uh, if you were able to do that in sort of creative accounting, as, as, so we've, we've talked about, uh, using that in another way and using that freeing up money to, to put on this project as you wished, as you wanted to initially, uh, that was certainly the best way to do that.
That, that's really unfortunate, you can't figure out two twenty-five out of that and.
Right. You know, if we were talking about a much larger dollar amount, you know, we would have to revisit the project.
Yeah.
But two hundred and twenty-five thousand, I think we can work with, and, um, you know, so that we have no negative impact on our project.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I just said no.
Thank you very much.
Very what?
Item four C, a bond document, compass financial, Keith Rock and Anthony Strong.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, it's good to be back with the board, uh, to see that the three of you that were with us here in October when we presented, and you became one of our clients, and, uh, we want to thank you for that, and to meet the one new board member, the other new board member, I've known a long time, so I can't say he's a new me, but we go way back from our time to, it's super, he's still superintendent, but I'm retired and recovering. Uh, but, want to thank the board, uh, for having us here, and now we're gonna kind of talk about how, how you go from the savings and how you pay for it, and how that piece comes, uh, and, uh, in doing that. Uh, before Keith kind of gets into the documents, uh, Superintendent had asked me to kind of go through the process that you would go through on the agenda for tomorrow night's board meeting, since, you know, you do have some new members, and just to refresh your experience, members of what we do. Uh, once you get to the part where you approve the contract for, for the project, then the next would be approving bond resolutions. And on the agenda would be a, a resolution, and, and, and Ms. Ballinger has those documents there that have been uh, written by your bond counsel that you have used in the past for that. And basically, what you'll do in the board meeting is you will approve that resolution, authorizing your finance corporation to sell bonds. And that's kind of one of the things that I didn't realize till I kind of started doing this work, is that, you know, school districts are not allowed to sell general obligation bonds. We have to do it through the finance corporation, which in, in the long run affects the district bad because of the fact that it affects your bond rating, because you get notched down on your bond rating when you do that. Uh, so, uh, that's hopefully something we can get changed. But you approve that resolution for the finance corporation. Once that's been approved, based on y'all's past practice, you'll recess the board meeting, and then you'll call together the finance corporation meeting agenda. Uh, a couple of things that you have to do before you get to the resolutions, uh, is after call roll, you have to make sure that you have seated the officers and the board members, because since the last time you met, you've got some new board members. So you'll have to confirm the chair, the vice chair, secretary of treasurer, and that the new board members, everybody that's on the board is listed, and do that. And once you do that, then there's an additional resolution that, that Ms. Ballinger has right in the packet that will authorize, you know, you're taking that authorization from the school board to sell those bonds, which gives us authority to start that process for you. So it's really, and then you'll adjourn your meeting and you'll go back to where you were in the regular board meeting. So, so that part is, is kind of a pretty simple process. Those who've been on the board before have probably done that before. So are there any questions about the steps that you'll go through in that? Okay, all right. Uh, Keith is gonna talk with you about the bond documents and what we'll do there, if there's any questions, uh, from that standpoint.
Yeah, I was trying to keep it high level too, but obviously, any questions, just fire them off, but we have a similar process on the financing piece. Your authorization's kind of step one of approving the, the bond documents. We'll submit, uh, information to, uh, uh, bond oversight committee to get their approval. That process will go through S F C C. Obviously, we've already been communicating with S F C C in, in regards to your twenty-twelve offer that is part of this finance plan. Uh, so we'll submit that, that documentation, they'll get it on the agenda for the next bond oversight committee, and that's kind of the driver of our financial timeline as well, so they don't meet again until, I think, middle of July, so we're gonna be trying to match all this up from a timing perspective. Uh, and then, we'll also, uh, uh, start the process.
And then we'll also start the process, we've worked with Jenny and Carrie on terms of the finance plan, that's a part of the, the numbers that you've seen. But then we'll also be working on getting offering documents together to market those bonds. You know, once we can kind of get a schedule together in terms of a, a sale date. But a part of that process will involve us getting the final KDE approved BG one and that we got to submit all that information through Fact Pack to, to get the, to get in the project approved, but you're also getting the financing piece to run through all the different channels. So what we'll typically do, you know, kind of once we're getting dates and assuming everyone's moving forward, we'll put out kind of a time and event schedule that we can share and make sure everyone's on the same page. But that's really kind of the, the process from our standpoint. The bonds, of course, are, are sold on a competitive basis, so, you know, the, the savings hopefully is going to be a lot higher than what you're seeing, hopefully the rates are a lot lower, but we can't really control that piece until we're actually able to go out and lock those interest costs in at that point in time. But that's really generally the process of the overview.
You said it's competitive, explain that to me a little bit.
No, that's a, that's, sorry, that's our lingo. It means that we actually take bids on the bonds themselves from purchasers, or underwriters we call them. So people that want to buy, buy bonds, so they'll, and we're talking about a four, 4.1 million dollar bond offering here. We need to know what your rates are and lock those in over the 20-year time horizon. So we structure all that and then we solicit competitive bids from big banks and financial institutions who will bid on it. We'll have a date and a time and there's a clock. You know, at 11 o'clock, all bids are due and then we'll be able to see who the lowest rate is. And then, of course, that's who will award the, the bonds to. And so there's a competitive process there.
You, you might remember when we made our presentation back in the fall, we talked about with the market, with bonds, typically Kentucky bonds for school districts typically have three to four bidders in the state. And we talked about how our market share with Kentucky business and South Carolina business, because we represent about 80% of districts in South Carolina as well. Yeah, our market, we've averaged six bids per, last year, six bidders for all of our bond issues and everything that we did. So that's part of our process is making sure, once we get everything ready to send to market, is that we market it to all of our clients out there so that you have that opportunity to get the most competitive price.
So we're hoping to structure the deal, getting your goals and objectives lined up, which we pretty much have the, we call it draft plan finance, and then now we're moving into the execution phase, which is the documentation piece, but then also the marketing and trying to execute the change at the lowest cost possible. But it's ultimately through this competitive bidding process that the, the rates are established.
Ms. Jenny, what is our current bond potential?
Seventeen.
About seventeen million.
And then we have some that come in.
That's the SFCC offer that will be rolled into this project. We have that, we, we don't use that currently, then we're going to lose that offer.
Yeah, so the, the SFCC offers roughly, the 2012 offer, which was 47,000 on an annualized basis, we're equating that to about 650, 700,000 based upon current rates, so that's the value of that. When we're talking about your bonding potential, that, you know, the last time we spoke about that 17 million included that 650. So you would kind of, it's not a stagnant number, but basically back that away for round math purposes. You know, the, the unique thing here with the energy savings being so high is that this, this financing piece here with the SFCC support, you know, shouldn't impact that bonding potential because the savings generated from the general fund are actually what's going to pay the district's portion of the debt service.
Yeah, this project's not coming off your bonding capacity.
Correct.
Because of weight structure.
I remember, Ms. Jenny, you gave us a, you gave us a copy, it's been a while back, of when everything would be, each bond that we had sold would come, finish, I guess. Could, could you get that for us again sometime?
We actually have an updated.
I don't know, I've got the, our summary level of it here, if that makes any sense, but yeah.
Yeah, if you could get us a copy of that sometime, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Hammond, you have any question?
No, all, all I'd say, of course, I think it's grand when you have a SFCC offer for someone, some entity is going to pay you that portion of your debt. I mean, and of course, this is carried for a long time and to have 600,000 or whatever, that's grand. You sure, we certainly wouldn't want to lose that, because it does go away. And I know everyone in years where I've been.
That's one of the things we shared with the district earlier, when they talked about this project, we said we need to utilize that, because you would lose it unless you have something that's small project, so.
See, what else, any comments, questions, concerns? Item four D, thank you very much.
Unless you have any other questions for us, I think we're going to go ahead back to yours.
I think you'll stay with.
If you want me to stay, I'll stay.
No, I would, I would question you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Item four D, historical review of financial revenues and expenditures, Ms. Swick, Jenny.
Okay, you have a copy of historical data on your Google Drive. And Brandon, if you don't mind, I'll let you, you mind to put that on our screen? So I, I know that you wanted to look at the historical data of revenues and expenditures for the school district. And we've provided that information back to 2001. And the breakdown is from all, these are from annual audits, is where the numbers come from. And we've also matched that up with investments and any change in investments per year, so that you can have that all in one place. I'd like to just share some information with you. You know, when you're talking about revenues and expenditures during a fiscal year, many things impact those revenues and expenditures. And the greatest impact does come from SEEK. And I'd like to just give you some information, if that would be okay, and then be glad to answer any questions possible. You may remember, we talked in 2000, those of you that were on the board, in 2017, we talked about some of the changes in SEEK. And during that time, we had made some changes within the district overall. We talked about zero-based budgeting and that, you know, it, it was a time that there had been a great deal of change that impacted the revenue side and specifically from SEEK. In 2015, 16, if I can just share these numbers with you. When we, if, when we go through our budgeting process, we get SEEK numbers from the state. We get a forecast, a tentative, and a final. And oftentimes, the numbers will change from each one. And, and you don't know, you don't always know that there's going to be a change. In 15, 16, from SEEK forecast to SEEK final, we had a negative 182,121. And so if we look over here at 15, 16, actually, Brandon, the document, if you don't care, is the revenues and expenditures document that's in the drive. If you go over to 15, 16, you'll see that while we had that negative 182,121, we were able to, in the, in the year, with a positive variance between revenues and expenditures. In 16, 17, we had a negative 327,361 that came from SEEK. And so that impacted our numbers from 16, 17. In addition, that was the year that, those of you that were not on the board, we lost several state grants, all Kentucky school districts lost these grants. Our loss was 216,054. Those grants covered instructional resources, professional development, and, drawn blank, instructional resources, professional development.
Where, where is your T16? Oh, it's not on there.
It's not on, yeah, these are not on here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I did not give you all those numbers, but I can, I can upload this document.
No, that's all right, I was just, make sure I was looking at.
So in 16, 17, just in SEEK and those grants, we lost 543,415. That was a very significant year. And I know Ms. Anna, Ms. Angie probably remember us talking about the amount that we had lost during that year. It was during this time that we also went through some restructuring in central office to combine jobs and save as many dollars as possible. In 17, 18, and these are just SEEK numbers, the forecast to the final SEEK was a negative 154,258. In these years alone, the difference, the loss in SEEK, you know, so once you lose those funds, you've lost them forever, So that was a big transition time for our district financially, as we tried to bring things back in line and, and begin to, you know, not replace positions with the attrition and realign positions, not only in central office, but some of that realignment, you know, happened at the school level as well. It was also during this time that the board agreed to fund all-day kindergarten. So right before we start losing these funds, January 2014, the board unanimously approved all-day kindergarten for Rock Castle County schools. And that August 2014, that plan was implemented. So during this time, it was through strategic planning and good management that we were able to work with our, our fluid budgets and maintain our cash flow.
Ms. Jenny, whenever we voted to, to do the all-day kindergarten, was there not extra money given down for that at that time? It was not?
Down, we supported half-day. And then we took on the other half at that point. That was the decision that we made. Just the other half.
Yeah, yeah. Now, that is one of the things for this upcoming year, that school districts across Kentucky will receive funding for all-day kindergarten. And in my opinion, long overdue from the state level, from that support. Just, just to revisit, the cost analysis for supporting all-day kindergarten, we recently talked about this. These are numbers for 2022. About a little over 800,000 to support all-day kindergarten. So the funds, the additional funds that we hope to receive from the state will help support that expense.
Is that for the year or that's the total that we've been?
That's the total.
Okay.
Total cost of classified and certified. Our budget, I just want to kind of give you some information overall about our budget. Our budget is used to motivate our staff to be more physically minded, to pay greater attention to detail. Our principals monitor and report SBDM budgets on a monthly basis to their school council. Department heads analyze expenditures not only for best prices, but also for best quality. Budgets are developed based on board-approved staffing allocations. Just to revisit, our staffing allocations in 2010 were 20 to 1. 2013, 21 to 1. 2014, 22 to 1. And in 2018, the board maintained a 22 to 1 elementary ratio and moved the middle high school to 24 to 1. As you recall, the, our board raised the allocation slightly from, to 23 to 1 for elementary, 26 to 1 for middle, and 27 to 1 for high school. These are minimal increases and still well below the state minimum requirement. And it continues to, to demonstrate this board's focus on instructional needs for our students. So while budgets, revenues, and expenditures are important, I, I just want to share with you the importance that, you know, it's, it's the support we're providing for our students and our greatest resource being our staff.
So, okay, you made the comment that that's reported to the principals how often?
Monthly.
Monthly. So I guess is, do you all have, how often do you all meet with the principals?
Monthly.
You meet with them monthly?
We have leadership teams, month, leadership team meetings every month. So all department heads and all principals meet here. It's typically till, we start at 8:30 and typically we have lunch and finish about 1:30 or 2:00. So we meet with them monthly.
And so in that meeting, it's financial? And then anything that's being implemented within the school at that time? What all does that consist of?
Every department head will report out. So it's basically department heads providing principals' information and then those principals will go back to their schools and share that information out to their, to the teachers.
Do they have a decision-making process with you all of everything that's being implemented within their schools?
Well, the site-based council would, would be in control of that. So the principal and the site-based council would make school-based decisions. But district-wide decisions, it's a, give, very much a give and take among all department heads and all principals about deciding what, which direction that they would like to go.
So, much like what SBDM set up, the district set up that way for participatory naming. Everyone is involved in the process.
Ms. Jenny, I guess I had a question about these numbers.
Sure.
Going, going through them.
Mm-hmm.
I'm always looking at things in parentheses.
Yes.
Listen, that's just, listen, that's what catches my eye before anything else, unfortunately. Every year, it talks about the difference as you go down, I'm looking at the difference. So really, if you were to look at this overall, this is a minus of what we've lost for that school year. Is that, am I looking at that correct?
It, it.
If you wanted to look at it that, from that perspective.
A positive or a negative.
Okay, yes, okay.
Whichever one, as you can see, there's been years that there's been a, a difference in revenues and expenditures, you know, all the way back to 2002. You know, some years were positive, some years were, you know, a negative between revenues and expenditures. Might not necessarily mean an overall negative, you know, for your, you know, like on your bank account. We're talking about, you know, what you budgeted and what you spent. And those SEEK numbers, you know, is, is one of the ways that, you know, a budget can be off. You know, if you did not anticipate that final SEEK allocation, you know, being less. And that's, that's why it's so important that we monitor enrollment, you know, attendance, our students in our spe, our special needs, the allocation that's in SEEK. So there's lots of things that impact SEEK. And it's, it's important that we continue. And some of those conversations we have in our leadership meetings to look at all those numbers and evaluate where we are.
I, I guess the reason I was wondering, and I, thank you for doing this, by the way, because I need to know and I know Angie's new and, well, Larry knows a lot about stuff like this, but Misty's fairly new when it comes to this too. So, you know, if we go back, go back to 2019, you know, as a board, we approved to move that 1 million over, if you wanted to call it, what, what is it you call it?
Bad, bad time money.
Bad, bad time money, okay. And then we, you know, and again, but we still ended up with a negative.
In your budget.
In the, but, okay, will you explain the difference in that and the real, I guess, reality?
Sure. And I have some information for you on that. Our contingency has, has been for a number of years. Um, our contingency has has been for a number of years, um one point eight million dollars.
Jenny, can you copy that? Will you, you all forgive me for being elementary on this, okay? But since it's a work session, I may try to get some, explain to me contingents.
Okay. The state of Kentucky requires that all school districts maintain a two percent contingency in their budget. Our percentage is about seven percent of our budget.
Still after all these years?
Yes, we have never changed the amount that remains in.
Ready day fund.
No, that is not this. That is totally separate from your CD money.
That's just what, I was trying to tell her what it was, like that's the money you don't use, but you have in case you need it.
Yeah, but that is different than these investments.
But that's not investment.
That is not investment.
That's just the cash balance.
That's just the balance that we are not, we're saying we're not going to budget it, and we're going to attempt to not spend below that on a fiscal year. Um, you know, but um emergencies do happen.
Sure.
And school districts may have to spend part of their contingency, and that's allowed. Um, and that's a district decision. But if the cooling tower goes down at Mount Vernon Elementary School prior to the replacement, we're going to have to have a cooling tower and added expense. And, you know, it might be that the district would have to spend some contingency. It it would just mean that for that year, you know, we might have to say, okay, we're going to spend two hundred thousand dollars of contingency. And we've not had to do that.
So with your budgeting, you have to have two percent, but you guys have seven percent. So even, you have five percent to play with even and not go below the two.
Correct, correct.
Five percent of thirty-two million, is that what it is? So it's one and a half, one point eight million?
So we've, I mean, we've maintained that at the time that you mentioned um the CDs. At the time that we talked about moving that million dollars, and that million dollars was moved for cash flow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, when, once we get to the point at June, we're here. You know, so we're in the process of processing three payrolls for the months of June. And when that goes out the door, it's four point two million dollars. And just like our bank accounts at home, when we pay a bill, we have to have that money in the bank. And in um two thousand and gee, you just said what year that was, huh?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Um, you know, going into paying payroll, you know, we, it it was going to be so close that we moved one million dollars. At the time that we moved that one million dollars, we had previously been receiving an interest rate of one point four percent. At the time that we made that move, um in two thousand, two thousand twenty, our interest rate was going to be higher in our bank account. It was time for a renewal. Um, there's a maturity date on those CDs. Each time a CD has a maturity rate, we look at the rate with the bank, we negotiate with them. And, you know, this last negotiation, um, you know, COVID was happening. And as we know, interest rates are very, very low. CD rates were very low. They were below the amount that our bank, our checking account receives. At that time, we made the decision, you know, that was kind of a, you know, March, April, May, you know, a a little time of uncertainty. And since the rate was lower, we negotiated with the bank that we had been working with, and we could not get a higher rate. At that time, we decided to move that into our checking account where would at least, currently, I looked before I came over, um, the rate at the end, excuse me, at the end of May is point seven-five percent.
So why do we leave that there?
Um, it has stor- historically been there um since uh two thousand and two. I I see that there's some years that it's been moved in in and out. It may be for the same, very same reasons that we've moved it most recently. I don't have that information. But um, you know, at this time, you know, the interest rate was more in our checking account, um so we moved it to our checking account. And um, you know, we're not budgeting those dollars. We're using those dollars for cash flow. Um, Brandon has um some spreadsheets that I brought over. Um, I did not upload these, but Brandon, if you look at, you have eighteen nineteen up? Is that what? Okay, I can't see that far. Is it eighteen nineteen?
Eighteen nineteen.
Okay, so eighteen nineteen, this is our Fund One cash flow. And each of the funds are broke out, just like you see on the monthly financial um provided um during our board meetings. This is just a summary, and um you'll see that um Fund One cash balance was negative for um quite some time. So this is um, you're looking at July to December. Brandon, you care to tab it over to January to June? So in June, at the end of um month-ending June, um four point two million dollars has gone out in payroll. And we're left with a negative one point three million dollars. If you come down, um whenever you're working with auditors and you're balancing where you are, um what you're going to carry forward for the next year, y- you can never have a negative overall. So Fund One had to borrow from Fund Two. Well, you'll see it's negative. Um, Fund Two had to borrow from um building fund, and then we had.
So we were negative all from June till the, for a whole year?
Yes, in Fund One. And it it all has to do with, you know, our SEEK payment comes in in usually on the sixth of every month. You know, that money comes in, and then we're spending it back out in payroll um at the end of the month.
But isn't it usually after that happens, after a couple of months, it, you get a positive balance and?
Yes, so in eighteen nineteen, this is where we were. And remember, we had come from losing eight hundred thousand dollars through SEEK um month after, you know, for three years coming into this year. So one of the um things that we've been working on is improving cash flow. So go to nineteen twenty. So in nineteen twenty, in Ju- if you look at July, Brandon. So as we have been working on not filling positions through attrition, you know, that opens up uh more funding in our budget, more funding in our um our cash flow. And so you go and what you see that we, you know, we hit a positive in December, then go to January and June. So, you know, this is the year we um, you know, we began to recover.
And it's also the year that we transferred that money, correct?
It is, however, if you look, um.
So that's how we recover.
That's how we recover. That money has not been spent.
Right.
That million dollars is not, it's it's not, you know, it's still there. It's not gone. That's how we showed a positive number, though.
Not not necessarily. Um, the the SE, how do I explain this? The CDs are rev- that's revenue that has already been accounted for. So when that transfer happens, you don't count it again as new revenue. And um you may recall, we talked at one time, you know, because I was very concerned, you know, about that transfer and wanting to show accountability for it. And we talked about increasing contingency. You may remember, Ms. Angie.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because I wanted it to be a place where I could see it. I wanted to be able to see that number. And in working with the auditor, we had to correct that. He said that we could not show that as new revenue because it was not new revenue. It was just moving cash. It was moving funds that were already in the district from one account to the other, kind of like from our savings account to our checking account.
The only numbers that we need to really worry about is our fund balance.
Yes, your overall balance.
Overall fund balance.
Yes. So go to um two thousand twenty-one. So look at July, and we start, we start, you know, the year much better. And um you'll see that we were now catching up on our fund. This, go to January and June. So at the end of May, you know, we're at three point two million dollars.
With 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 the transfer, uh, really, and I won't go back and say something, maybe this will help too, maybe it won't, but those CDs years ago, interest rates on CDs were a lot better.
Yes.
I mean significantly better. And it got to the point that um they were same as nothing, just like what you've described, and they've been going that way for quite some time. And and transferring it into a checking account that's got a better rate makes all sense in the world. Only, only thing I'd say, though, is that if we uh look at the bottom line, the the fund balance, that we've moved that in and we were sinking, and then that gets us up to floating or whatever, it's because of that number. I mean, because of what's put in. It's it's our money, it's the district's funds to start with, and you can't count your new revenue. We've got it over here, and it's not, it's just over here to the side, and we put it in this account. But that's actually what what brought it up. And then too, looking at, looking at this over time, and and some years ago, we had, and I don't even, don't even attempt to try to remember exactly what it was, we've had more than seven percent. I won't say, we even had twelve percent at one point in time. And then as you as you look at this, you're in balance, even at twelve, we had four point two million, and it's declined. There are several, there's a lot of, there are a lot of reasons in that in SEEK, and one of the things that I'd mention first and foremost is student attendance, student enrollment. And you've heard me say this since I've been here and quizzed uh Marcus, and if you're losing students, then then you're losing SEEK. Long story short. And then with with kindergarten, there's no doubt that kindergarten is grand, should be there. But if it's costing eight hundred thousand, what I wanted to ask was, how many students, and of course, you, I know Marcus is not here, but how many students we have in kindergarten? What's that half, what what is half of kindergarten?
About, we usually plan for two-twenty. I plan for two-twenty, there's a few less than that this year. Um, we think there'll be more than that this coming year.
So we'll get payment then for half of that, yeah. So then, and there's no doubt that that, this year, it's like a windfall. I mean, and hopefully the state will continue that.
I was going to ask, how how long do we foresee that staying in place?
It's only for one year.
Until they run out of uh COVID money themselves.
And then.
And then we'll be back back in the same situation as we were.
And then with, where we've improved uh significantly this year, what do you, how much of that do you attribute to ESSR?
I don't attribute any of it. I don't, any.
None of that's ESSR funding. Where is your ESSR? What are you putting that in?
It will go in Fund Two, but um those funds, so if you see like the negative in Fund Two, we do have um, you know, like grants are reimbursement basis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we, once we spend those funds and we request reimbursement, um gear up, our literacy grant, um FEMA, I've been working with FEMA today. Um, you know, we have about two hundred thousand dollars of that negative eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars that is FEMA funds. Um, and then a large portion of it, we request um federal cash reimbursement on a monthly basis. You know, so there's constantly, you know, the in and out of those transactions. Um, but.
Are you going to get to FEMA?
I I certainly hope so.
Oh, I I mean, I thought you might have actually gotten it. I I was going to be excited for you.
We are much closer today, this week, than we've ever.
We're on representative number five. And.
But he's been very attentive.
He's been very attentive.
He's a new guy.
He.
I hope it's, I mean, I really, that's, yeah, that's good.
Um, I I think I shared with you that um we will keep working toward those dollars until they tell us no. Um, and if that's the case, then we will work to transfer those funds appropriately. Um, and I I would love to know that before the end of June, but I don't know that that will happen. Um, and we have gone back and forth between working with federal FEMA and state FEMA. So that's just been a process, and we are continuing to work the process. Um, so we hope to submit our final um submission and documentation in the morning.
Ms. Jenny, I I guess my question really, um, I guess one of the reasons I wanted to talk about finances so much was um overall, we've got this money coming in ESSR funds, which can be very deceiving overall when you're looking at how much money a district has as far as hiring new positions, uh implementing new things, you know, we want to do all of that. I'm not against that, first of all. But I guess overall, I wanted to know uh historically what percentage we're losing every year. Because I, ever since I've been on this board, I I don't know if I've ever been here and heard anybody say that we have gained money this year.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so I I guess I kind of just wanted all of us to to see, just so that we know whenever we're making decisions to hire people, put positions in, you know, after this, these ESSR dollars are over with, we have to maintain these salaries. So it's important to know, Angie, that any position that we have created this year, such as our academic interventionist or anything, we have put a timeline on that.
Two years, right, yes.
That that is only, so there's been nothing created that we will have to sustain.
But we will eventually create something that we will have to sustain.
I mean, I mean, that's a given. You're going to need, you're going to need positions throughout the district. I mean, I would think, I would hope that you would, but I I just, I I guess I kind of just like to historically know, you know, I know you, I know you're not God, and you can't sing. That's so good, but I.
Can we have like this of ESSR funds? Can we have some kind of breakdown of that?
Sure, because when the ESSR funds are gone, the prices are not going to go back down.
No, as far as the staff, I'm rude, but the staff that we hire, I know we can, and I think I've said that even here. Uh, Anna, you know, this is limited employment that you're getting here, and you're going to be employed here for one year or three years. But in the end, and I know that you know this, but I'm going to give Anna a see-you letter, see-you later note, a pink slip with with all of that, and that's and that's going to happen because it doesn't just happen on its own, and I'm not saying that you're not planning for that. But I mean, it's not just like we start out.
That's exactly what we're planning for, though, because we know that we have to address learning loss.
Can you go through what, what new positions are just ESSR only? Can you tell me really if that's what they are?
Academic interventionist or ESSR only, the academy principal, we put a timeline on that as well.
What about the mental health coordinators? How, was that's not completely, that's completely different?
Right.
That's what I need to, thank you. Is that on a so many-year schedule as well, or is that indefinite?
So Ms. Angie, that we created the very beginning of the school year, that has absolutely nothing to do with ESSR. That was just, we created a mental health position. The one that we have just posted and just fielded is a short-term position using ESSR funds.
That's what I was thinking, okay, because that's already been concerning in the community that that they want it to last. It's been asked of me. And I don't know anything about it, but I just told them, no. No, we can't continue that.
Well, but and and you know, I would say, and I'm not, everybody knows this, I'm confident. Mental health issues are not what they used to be. There's a lot more business for mental health folks, and that's not going away. Uh, I mean, which you you know that. I mean, with, to meet the needs here, uh, we're not going to cure the ills of COVID or the skyrocketing or escalating issues in homes and lack of support, broken families, no family to start with. That's here. I mean, that's that's reality today, uh, and that's not going to change. I don't care if we had ESSR funds or not. So as we go forward, we, and now we in every district, I think we'll have to plan to keep more of those people of that type than what we want to.
And that will be a budget decision that we have to make, that you all have to make as a board of what you, what positions you value and what positions you want to see us budget for going forward.
But it is hard to tell somebody that is hoping for a job longer than three years, no, when they're still hoping. That's what, that's kind of the thing I was kind of getting to, that it's already, oh, I hope it continues, and then three years where the bad guys.
Oh, yeah.
I would, I would tell them, well, maybe we should look other places. If you're wanting, if you're wanting to stay somewhere for a long time, you probably.
No, that's what they're signing, that's what they're signing on for.
Exactly.
You know, and there's a contract there that says this is going to last for this long, and after this contract ends, then you'll get your slip.
I think that people see it, though, because we have been told this very thing many times before, and it never was that way.
All right, yes, I get that.
I mean, you understand what I'm saying. I've been told, I don't know how many positions of, oh, this is just for a one-year thing, and then ten years later, they're still working for the district, and not that they're not needed, and not that they're not doing a good job. It's just that it was presented to the board. It's just that it was presented to the board under the wrong pretense, instead of somebody just being, okay, we're only gonna say two years, but we wanna keep them on and on and on. I would rather know the truth upfront and prepare myself than to get, feel down the road like I've been lied to.
And that goes right back to me being responsible and me holding us as being fiscally responsible and accountable. If we say two years, we mean two years unless as a board you come back and ask us to do something.
And that's contractual though. It's in the contract. I'm assuming it says that. Yeah.
The job was posted, it was posted for a two-year period. So everybody knows that upfront.
And again, we, I tell you, open over.
When you get to that point.
If I don't give you the letter, that doesn't count.
If they love.
And if you love them, then the district.
But if you hate, if you hate the job, it's not so bad. Leave after two years.
But in planning ahead, I don't think anyone in here would, would think that the needs gonna go down.
That's the hard part though.
The mental aspect, the social, social and emotional wellbeing of students. So, you know.
It's harder now than it's ever been.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you see it every day and I know you do as well. Everyone does. And that, that piece, that need's going to continue to increase regardless of what SBDM allocations are. And you can't accomplish the other if you don't deal with that. I mean, if we don't meet that, if we don't meet that need, then we certainly won't be doing very well.
If you don't meet that need, you can't teach them how to read, can you? Or algebra.
Afraid not.
Ms. Jenny had another question. I seen over here you, the C E R S percentage. I know that that's going up a little bit every year, isn't it?
Twelve percent every year.
Every year. Could you, how much, do you know roughly how much that is?
Can you tell me what C R E S means? I'm so sorry.
County Employment Retirement System.
Oh, okay.
So our classified staff are in C E R S and our certified staff are in T R S.
Now, is this, this is an employer match percentage, correct?
Yes.
So the overall goal would be to hire less? No, I'm joking. I bet that I'm being smart.
By what, it gets to where you can't afford to hire. I mean, you cannot afford it.
And that was some of the work we did with our SBDM allocation and defining what positions the district was funding. And, and what positions that we know that as those positions are vacated, that we're not filling. And it's just the time that we're in financially that we have to make those tough decisions. And, you know, we know Rock Castle County Schools is going to continue to focus on instruction and what's best for students. But we have to continue to monitor and adjust according to our revenues and expenditures. And our expenditures, you know, we know that that's going to go up twelve percent every year.
For how long is it forecasted? Because eventually the percentage is gonna be, I'm thinking.
A hundred percent.
Because it's at thirty point eighteen, the next year will be forty, forty-two.
Actually, I see that I've got a mistake on there. It would have been for a fiscal year twenty-two, thirty point eighteen. The COVID year delayed it a year, so it's twenty-six point nine five for, for next year. So they, they kept it level the current, current year and next year it will go.
How much is that, twenty-six point nine five?
When we were budgeting, I had that number. Seems like it was, seems like it was about sixty-five thousand dollars, off the top of my head.
So that number is determined on the state level, correct? It's not district. Every district is that.
How much does the state do a match for you, Anna?
Thank you. The state is determined by the state.
I haven't had a raise in ten years, Anna. We won't talk about retirement. I guess I retire when I hit a foot in the ground.
But you know, in, in all of this, certainly going back to the conversation about participatory management, when everybody comes in here together and every bit of what we're talking about and everything that we have that's put on the table and every, more people understand it, the better off they are. And, and hopes of Angie going back and telling the story the way it is, because in years gone by, I've seen principals that, well, you know, Trent Clark said this over there at that central office and, but we're gonna do this. And, and maybe Trent, maybe we don't understand or we don't know what's going on, or I'm just a jerk and I wanna cause trouble. But in the, in the absence of us as a group, this five plus everyone within the district, fully understanding and appreciating, appreciating what the other person does. The further down the road we go, the less pleasant it will be and the less support will be. And the harmony and the peace, and when you get about two percent, you think about it at home. Maybe you've never, maybe you've never seen a place that's short on funds. Maybe you've never been short on funds, didn't make any mistakes. You had made more money, Anna, than what you needed. When we get short on funds, and I said this from, I was here, if we wanna fall out and start picking at each other, let's get down there where funds are tied. And then Misty, I believe she's getting more than I'm getting. Or I believe that Roundstone, I believe Roundstone's getting more than me and I'm at Mount Vernon. Or the raise itself, I'm struggling at home. And then when you cut somebody or you reduce a staff somewhere, that's, that's reality. When funds get, think about it at home, if you've ever experienced that where you were short on funds, same thing's true here. Then we pick at each other. We, we collapse and turn.
I've been so proud of our administrative staff at the school level. This year more than ever. They are making tough decisions and making very strategic plans for this next school year. You would be very pleased with the conversations that Ms. Carrie and I are hearing. They're making tough decisions and they are adjusting instructional plans based on the staffing.
It's not easy decisions that they're making, but they understand the need and the why behind it. They're understanding our declining enrollment. They're understanding our loss in SEEK. They're understanding how that pertains to the school level and what that looks like of staffing. And they're seeing that. And we have sat down individually with each principal and walked them through their particular school and what, what, how does this translate to their school? And they're, just this week we've met, or I guess Friday we met with a principal and, and he's, he said, I really didn't understand this before and now I do. And I, I can make decisions because I know why.
And it will be important that they continue to share that communication with staff because more than ever, our staff will need to be flexible. You know, we may have to, you know, we may need someone in this position where, you know, maybe they didn't do that last year. But if we can monitor and adjust, we will be most successful financially. And our schools, our board, this administrative team has students always at the forefront of our decision-making. And that's something that Rock Castle County can always be proud of, that we're making decisions on what's best for students. And, you know, we know we have to make adjustments as enrollment declines, as finances change. We talked about our federal funds with ESSR. You know, budgeting for ESSR is totally separate than our, our fund one, our general fund. You know, that's a totally separate budget that, you know, we're making decisions and budgeting based on needs that are a response and a result of COVID. It's been a very challenging year for our, our instructional teams at the school level. They didn't have the time to plan a curriculum for students. You know, we had to respond to COVID. And our technology staff, you know, we had very few Chromebooks in our district. And, you know, we can't say enough about the technology team that responded effectively, efficiently and put hand, put technology in the hands of every student in Rock Castle County Schools. That was a great feat. And not every school district was able to get the Chromebooks. You know, we ordered very early on and got those in and we were ready to implement and to move forward. Our food service staff and transportation staff. I mean, the number of, I mean, just the number of meals that have been served and delivered in our community is just phenomenal. Our, you know, we talked about facilities tonight. You know, decades of research demonstrates that the quality of facilities has a direct impact on student achievement. And we have to continue to maintain our facilities, you know. You know, last year gave the opportunity with COVID and our shutdown to do some repairs in our facilities that, you know, we had not necessarily planned. But, you know, we had the opportunity to resurface a parking lot. You know, because we had the, you know, the time to do that. So we took advantage of some of those things. This team plans well together. Our administrative staff at the school level, again, cannot compliment them enough about the work they're doing currently to prepare for next school year. And the understanding, the greater understanding that they have about the tough decisions that they have to make. And it requires more planning to implement that in a new school year. They're doing a great job. You know, we have, we make tough decisions every day about finances and we're constantly monitoring and adjusting. And, you know, presenting, I feel like we present the budget, you know, we're down to contingency. We're budgeting. Our revenues that come into our district on an annual basis are spent on the students for that fiscal year. And that's the intent.
As it should be. That's, that's the intent of SEEK funding. The intent of our taxpayer dollars is to spend that money, that revenue on the students of Rock Castle County for that current school year.
I know Jenny, that we, we've discussed in the past, you had, I don't know if you were the one that had talked to us about it or if it was Mr. Fensel at the time, about our tax rate. I know that's something that's gonna be coming about pretty soon. You wanna elaborate on anything like?
We continue to be one of the very lowest. You know, we have a very, very low tax rate in Rock Castle County. And that's wonderful for our community. At the same time, there, the revenue that's generated in Rock Castle County to support schools may not be as great as it is in a surrounding community. And, you know, it just means that we have a little bit less to work with. And I think we continue to work very efficiently and effectively with the resources that we do have.
Ms. Jenny, now you were just talking about the contingency and the money spent. I had asked at another board meeting, like these, this investment column, like where it come from. And I think this is where Anna said like, bad, bad money. And like.
No, it's good, good money.
So, but I would think like, somebody had said that like, if there was money left over, that that's where that would go or whatever. But these look like even numbers. So can you explain like this column? And like, what's the plan for this money? Like what, like I hear what you guys are saying and we've got the contingency and the balance. And it, when I look at these numbers, and maybe Mr. Hammond might can explain that better, but like, the numbers on the year-end balance, they don't, they don't really match up with the investment piece. So I was, I would just like to know like, what, it's just not talked about. Like what is this money for? What can we, cause like, when I see like, if we've got a seven percent contingency and, and all of this money, it has to be spent. And I see like this much sitting there, which I do see that like a million was transferred and then that was helpful. I couldn't tell you where that went. Like I kinda got lost and all that, but, but, right. But I'm like, that could, that could do a lot for our kids. So.
Paid for teachers. It paid salaries. I mean, when it got transferred, it, the money was used to, to create a positive.
Right, because it's still there. It's not.
No, no, I'm saying it's still there, but that was, that is all part of the total balance, correct?
It is.
So it's still there. But it was transferred.
Still in there.
Yes.
So that lets me know it's not, but it's not spent. Correct. So it didn't pay teachers.
It did not.
No, it just helped cover payroll at that time. That was why it was moved over.
SEEK funding came in, then that caught us back up.
It caught us.
And, you know, at some point, if the decision is made that you want to do something different with those funds, you know, that's the decision of the board.
And if you'll recall, Ms. Jenny, when we had our last strategic planning meeting and she did, she did her SWOT analysis on finance, that was one of the concerns or one of the, was it weakness? Or it could be a weakness or opportunity. You know, perhaps a weakness that there's not a clear plan, but an opportunity that we could develop a clear plan.
I don't have access to information, historical information to know where that money originated from. I just know that, you know, those were in CDs and we have just monitored the rates on the CDs and put them, you know, you know, a couple of years ago, we negotiated the rate and got a real, a really much higher rate.
I think that's what I don't understand is like, if it's not drawing as much money in the checking account, why is it there?
Well, at one point, it, it was paying more in the checking. And that's why we transferred it to the checking.
So if we're just a million, no, not all of it.
You don't get much interest on that worth of that.
No.
So, Mr. Hammond, maybe you could help us historically understand of where, yeah, investment wise, how did that originate?
It's a little bit contrary to what, you know, yes, the fund, funds are intended to be spent today, you know, this year for kids. But it was, you know, on an annual basis, what you get, you know, and need to educate your kids while they're here. But that was from good management over an extended period of time. And the contingency increased. I mean, that's it. A long story short. And if we had some good fortune with Grant, we could shuffle some funds around. It was good management. And, and then with that, going back to, if you wanna call it rainy day fund or whatever we wanna call it, when you, I wouldn't want to deal with what you're dealing with if you get a whole lot, if you, really if you get, when you get to five percent, everybody watching what you're doing. And when you wanna fall out, when you get anywhere close to two percent. And when you get under two percent, somebody gonna come in and look at everything, you know, before you can expend funds, the state tells you.
But these investments are in addition to the seven percent contingency. So that is not part of that.
Yeah. It's all management. I mean, it's all.
Did it come from like, did it come from building projects? I mean, do you, do you, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, it was from the entire gamut, from facility.
Was it just put over in a CD because it would draw more interest over it?
At one point in time, the, the CD rate was, I don't know, three, four, five percent. And now it's less than one percent. It made money for, I mean, it was a moneymaker for the district.
But there were so many more grants to write for then too.
That's why Jenny was hired as a credit writer, but you, but you hired me.
Now compared to what it was ten years ago? Unreal, isn't it Jenny?
I thought you said it has to be spent. When money comes in.
Depending on what it comes from.
It's spent based on the budget that's designed and approved by the board. But the, the revenues that are received on an annual basis are design, are designated for, you know, to support that, that school year. You know, SEEK is, is allocated to support Rock Castle County Schools for this school year.
I feel like, I mean, in, in my personal educational philosophy, that it is our responsibility to make sure that whatever money that is allocated, if you have a student in Rock Castle County Schools during those year and you have a student, you have a student, that it's our responsibility to ensure that money is being properly spent on the education of your, your children. And that we have to ensure that we're doing that. I just, I don't feel like that we're above our contingency, which is required, the two percent. And I'm really proud that we have a seven percent. And if we could grow that, that would be even better. But as far as investing money, I, I just, I, I feel like Rockcastle County Schools is in the business of educating students, not in investing money.
I agree with that. My only thing about that is if you wanted to look at that investment of three million, you might as well go ahead and knock it down to two million, five hundred thousand. Because we, we just, ish, we just voted for a raise that's not going to be allocated in SEEK. I'm su, I'm confident of it, which was well deserved.
The raise through our, through attrition, through the positions that have been cut this year, that raise is going to be covered for that.
Five hundred thousand?
I understand that we're not in the business.
Historically, though, on and on and on and on and on.
As long as we don't replace those positions. We have full, like, full, we wouldn't have suggested that the board vote for a raise if we couldn't have paid for it. So we've paid through, for it through those positions.
And two, again, going back to the total picture, you cannot keep morale up and never give a raise, given the circumstances that are here. But that, but that's a balancing act, because one of the things I want to mention, we got two or three things here, I've been in a hurry. You know, looking at this, tax rates, you know, property values, this little house over here, and I'm going to sell, uh, hope to sell it or intend to over here on William Street. I bought it, uh, a few years ago, gave sixty-five thousand dollars for it then. And it's the increase, she appraised it this year, and I didn't contest it because I think it's worth it, I think I intend to get more than that. Ninety-something thousand, like thirty thousand dollar increase, nearly fifty percent. But when, and I, you know, I think it's worth that and I'm going to sell it anyway. But if you, or you, or you, or your grandpa, or your cousin, those people that get those increased property values and then tax rates go up, that's a morale factor, too. I mean, uh, you, when you get into it with, uh, Trent Clark, and he lives out here on the ridge somewhere, and he's got all this property, and he's not got any kids, he's old, he didn't have any kids to start with, and he's tired of paying. I'm, all the reason I'm saying that is, everyone has a view on this, and that's all goes into the morale factor. Now, the tax rate here itself is extremely low. But salaries here, and I, I would, I intend to look at it and do some comparisons, comparing it to where I'm working and where, where that district is. Now pointing out to the board, of course, it's the same conversation, only it's a little bit, uh, more volatile, maybe. Uh, lowest paying district, I, I looked at a teacher with twenty-five years, lowest paying district around. Have New Cor, you know, it's not rich, not a wealthy district, but New Cor Steel, got some revenue coming in. You can't be the lowest paid district in the neighborhood and, and keep good folks. They will, you can commute, you know, you can go someplace else. And I don't know where we stack up in looking, and I'm looking at, I mean, Jackson County may be ahead of us, but I'm looking more toward the west, north and west, because I would expect them to pay more, and, and we need to look at that. So I'm talking to both sides of my mouth, because if you don't, if, if you don't give raises, you won't maintain good staff. And more than likely, you're not getting, uh, I mean, you'd like to think you've got better quality people. The tax thing's one thing, and then, um, this is, I'm going to say this is all budget driven. I just want to throw this out, because we did this in where I'm working in some other districts, that if you talk about the summer, maybe no one said anything back, maybe you did it, maybe Ms. Teresa Combs talked to you about it, contract for summer employment, because these teachers, the thought was, they fulfill their contract for that amount. And it, and these classified folks did a little addendum to the contract, all new people, all summer employees, signed quote, something, so you can't come back and fuss at the district. And I'm, I'm really big on not coming back and getting after the district. The other thing I want to throw out, before I forget it, and, and we can look at it, or we can drop it, but I want to go on record with this group, the calendar, uh, a variable calendar. If, when, when you get your time in, I can claim that my time, you know, you can shorten the year. And if, when you do that, then you've got lots of things to deal with, classified employee. So I would suggest, and I'm not going to say more than that, because I don't want to drag this out, but I had to say it to this group, might want to revisit the variable calendar issue, because I would suggest that we not start with a variable calendar, that it would be a hundred and seventy days because of just what I'm referencing. If it stays a hundred and seventy, fine, no one says anything, that's fine. And if, if Angie, as a teacher, gets her time in five days before school, the calendar is up, she wants to claim I'm done, because that's what's allowed through this, then she can cause an issue for this place. So I've jumped, I'm calling that finance as well, but I want to get that out.
I didn't realize that.
I didn't realize that.
I'm going to have to go back and research that.
I, I can, I'll bring you a copy of what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that could be a concerning thing.
Before, before the year, as long as you change it before the year starts, and if you, but if you start after that, if you start after that date and you've got less than a hundred and seventy days, then it's variable. And we're starting variable.
What are we starting with?
We are starting.
Hundred and sixty-eight, I think.
With the increased time. But we done increased time daily.
Yeah, and the reason I tell you that, I mean, this, uh, this last year, this COVID year, where I am, we did that. We did a variable calendar, and we dealt with this. I mean, we knew it going in, but I'm telling you what, it's a chore for you.
We've had a variable calendar this year, but we haven't had any issues. We haven't had the first issue.
We cut several days off at the end, and people and the teachers were finished, and we dismissed early. And teachers can make, I mean, staff, not just teachers, they can make an issue of that, and if they, if they bring it up, it's real. We had, we, we had several days less than a hundred and seventy, started out that way. Gave us some variance when we were dealing with upticks in COVID. But then got to the end of the year and time's up, and we had to call it quits earlier than we wanted to, although we knew it.
Did you have one thousand sixty-two hours?
Oh, yeah.
See, that was the difference, because we did not.
Yeah, but now.
That's the difference. They did not reach, they had to get the, to one thousand sixty-two hours, and they didn't reach that one thousand sixty-two until the last day's score.
Is that how their contracts are written, as hours versus days?
And if it's calculated, and you, and you don't get, yeah, the deal's on a thousand sixty-two hours. When you get a thousand sixty-two hours, if it's in a hundred and sixty days.
But they're still on the contract for a hundred and eighty-five days, irregardless. Those are days with students, but teachers still have a hundred and eighty-five day contract that they're obligated to fulfill.
This variable calendar's different.
But if our, if they have a contract with us for a hundred and eighty-five days, then they have to fulfill a hundred and eighty-five days. So the remainder, if they're not with students, so they have to get one thousand sixty-two hours. Once they hit that time, that's time with students. And then from however many days, that equates to two one hundred and eighty-five days are days that they still have to fulfill on their contract based on professional development.
Pre-current time. I mean, I'll, I'll bring it, I'll bring it, show it to you, or I'll email it to you.
Do you have any other questions that I can answer?
I probably had a few.
Can we make, can we talk more about this, this three million? Like, I think that we need to have a plan for it.
I'd like to, I'd like to see what the plan would be. I mean, just because, uh, if you're wanting to spend it, I'd like to know what we want to spend it. I mean, if, if that's what you all had talked about or whatever, you know.
I were, I know some kids, and I work with the youth group, and like, some of them have to, like, travel to play tennis. Some of them have to go away for track meets. Like, I just feel like there's some things that could really benefit the kids if this is set here that long.
Listen, over the years, I can remember a time that, uh, the track team didn't even have uniforms. And we won the state every year. I mean, now, seriously, that's pretty serious stuff.
We were talking about SRS funds, and if you start a, start a project, it all has to come for SRS funds. And you bring up track. What, can we use SRS funds to, to help review our track?
Spend on athletic facilities.
Can't spend, because like, our kids, like.
But I do feel like I support you one hundred percent, but that's any.
That is something that we need to address, because, like, they can't even hardly hold meets here anymore.
Well, they can't. We cannot have home meets, and that's, that's a real shame.
The SWOT analysis that you all did, can maybe a condensed version for the board? It was wonderful for the ones who didn't see it.
I'm meeting Wednesday, well, tomorrow, no, Wednesday.
It was the best one ever, because it addresses a lot of things that we're talking about, facilities, being the big one.
On Wednesday, I'm meeting with each department head to review their SWOT analysis, and then we're going through to put activities with that to support those threats, or, and so then we'll come back to the board and present all that.
It opened my eyes to a lot of the facility stuff mostly, and which is, touches upon all of them.
You had said something about a tennis team that had to do this, or, you know, whatever. And I, I really, I feel like you do. The only thing I would say, you got to be very careful when you start giving certain areas money.
It has to be across the board.
I mean, you understand what I'm saying? You can't handpick, oh, just because, okay, let's use it.
It's kind of like, the way I view that, like, if there's, if there's a tennis team, and they don't have a tennis court, then the football team has a court, baseball team has a field, you know what I mean? Like, they don't have one. To me, I would think it's not like you're, you're starting.
Our swim team don't have a pool.
Our golf team don't have a golf course. I mean, you're just.
We got three million dollars.
They're not going to buy nothing. I mean, and I, I completely understand, but that's the only thing I would say, is whatever the plan would be.
Larry, did you have a plan for this? Like, or was it just like, just a savings?
Well, it wasn't savings, it was, you know, as, as needs came along. I mean, uh, you know, just like what we were talking about. When, when this group comes up with a need that we're, that's palatable, then we ought to go toward that end.
I, I will say, and I'll, and just food for thought for you all to be considering, if we're going to be having these discussions about investments that, as you all know, Rockcastle County Middle School is a class five building. We couldn't bond out for renovations if we wanted to. It's not, I mean, it is, it is in pretty rough condition. We have seventeen million dollar bonding capacity right now. You know, we might want to think about what, you know, three million dollars, adding that on to the potential to, to fund a middle school, a middle school twenty-seven to thirty million. So, I mean, it would have to be a long range plan.
Much smaller school, too, right? I mean, in comparison, I mean, square footage wise, trend probably.
The footprint of the school would be smaller, but, I mean, you go in that building, you look how wide the hallway is.
There's a lot of wasted area.
What, what you said, that such as that was part of what we spent some of, I'm going to call it savings for. If you accumulate something and a project came along, and some of those fields that you're talking about, a part of it, you know, and, and some of those funds were increased, you know, the baseball field, softball field, you know, that wasn't at the high school initially.
That, that, that planning for that is important.
I think all these, all these conversations have to set off that we go in and we, we do a new facility plan. Because we, our current facility plan's not adequate for what we're talking about now.
That's the reason I went to start North Castle County first. No, I was, that was one of the reasons, I knew that you all had had some discussion about that. That's the reason I was wondering when our bonds come, because I believe a few years ago, we were going to have, like, pretty good bonding potential here in a couple of years.
So we, Mr. Clark and I have had the discussion, we're not satisfied with our current facilities plan. So we are going to move forward with, um, starting that process a year early to go ahead and get a facilities plan in place that we're comfortable with, that really meets the, the, the needs that we see across the district. And on that, we want to ensure that it is a replacement of Rockcastle County Middle School, not that we're going to renovate, because that would be very, very wasteful, not a wise investment of taxpayer money. And even if that, we wouldn't be allowed to, to do that.
And, and I understand that, certainly understand that. But I'm, I can laugh about that, because there'd be plenty of people here don't understand that, because they, for the ones that were here when Mount Vernon Elementary was built in nineteen eighty-nine, and that facility that was there before, that, if, if it'd been today, there'd been protests. I mean, they, the, the whole, the people were mad, I mean, what, what's wrong with that? My kids went there, my grandpa went there.
I completely understand, but I do think we have to consider student safety.
I'm not saying not, I'm just telling you, then, when you, when that conversation starts, you better have a strategic plan, because Joe, John Doe driving down the street, look at that building, looked pretty good to me.
There was a plan that's kind of, I don't know if this is out of turn, that I had heard, is maybe donating it to the community? Or giving it, selling it to the community?
I don't think we can donate. I don't think that, I think that goes against law.
It's not like a great idea.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I mean, I, we'd have to check into that, but I don't think that we are allowed to give.
Like Shopville, not Shopville, um, what's the one, Woodstock? Yeah, I mean, it's a community center now, it was a school.
It's, it's on a much smaller.
Yeah, I just thought it would be a great idea.
And go along with that, yes, and, uh, but I go back on, uh, everybody's sentiment. When, when the property was purchased, oh, y'all, way too young, uh, was purchased for the high school. A lot of people fussed about that. When you, when you get into something like that, and I'm not saying, I mean.
Cause you're changing the course of history.
The, the average person, it looks good enough. I mean, that's just reality.
It doesn't function on that, on the scale that we need it to function.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah, I know, yeah, no, but I don't think everybody else understands.
Oh, no, no.
You'll have everybody in here snotting and flinging.
You, you, you see, don't stand up front, I mean, Trent Clark.
Hey, well, you know, you said something about a pool years ago, when that was designed, the cafeteria was supposed to be a swimming pool.
And I'm, I'm with you on it. What I'm saying is, you need, you need to know that upfront, with that happen.
It was designed for that to be a, a swimming pool.
Uh, well, a lot of cases.
Can we not, we did not, like, you know, you had, we talked about our kids having a.
I don't know if I could, can you not?
Sports complex. I, that's why I said, when that school was built, the cafeteria was supposed to be a swimming pool.
What is so unsafe about our middle school?
Can that be repurposed or a sports complex or?
I don't think, I don't think at this point, I mean, where we are now, we could take anything off the table. I mean, we need to get every option and, and, you know, we make a sales way, we'll have plenty of people on our menu.
Because there could be some repurposing for that.
Everybody has good ideas, and, and that very well may be that we can do that. But we'll just have to consider what the district can afford to, to pay for in the future, to, you know, maintain.
The county would have to come in at that point and help.
And I think that's another thing that we have to consider, and, and Ms. Carrie and I talked a lot about, the community and the county.
Would have to come in and support to make a facility like that happen.
That may have donations that they want to give, some people have talked about that. So, I mean, I don't think, we just, we need to, we need to, it's going to be a long-term planning process, not something that's going to be fast, but we don't need to take anything off the table, and we need to really be mindful about what we do.
Yeah, absolutely, we completely support that a hundred percent, and, and we've had those discussions, but that has to start now. That has to start with having a solid facility plan. It has to start with doing our SWOT analysis and, and recognizing our needs. It has to start with looking at our finances and investments, and, and could we, or could you as a board, you know, earmark that? Okay, this is our goal, this is a goal we want to set for Rockcastle County Schools, and this is money that we would be, that we could approve allocating for that function. So, I mean, it all goes together, so that's why the strategic planning process that we've been going through is so important to cast a vision, where do we want to go? And, and of course, just like Mr. Hammond said, there will be problems. You know, we can't put our head in the sand and say that there won't be, but also, I know that I was hired as superintendent of Rockcastle County Schools to put our students first. And I think as board members, you all would be supportive of that as well, and we have to think about.
That is my goal.
That's what we're here for. What, what can we do to make Rockcastle County Schools the best for our kids? Whether people are upset.
It's not just, it's just not in school, it's, it's, it's even the outside spectrum for our kids.
Sure.
And that's not been, that's not been addressed by our community. It's been, it's been left out.
It's not been a priority yet.
No, ma'am.
I will give y'all a couple of different perspectives, is, um, you were talking about, like, the old school. I gra, after I graduated a couple of years, they built a new high school at Jackson County. So like, to drive by and see that building, like, were some of my best years, just like, go downhill, which I think they're repurposing it now for the board, but, and that was, that hurt my heart. But when I went.
But when I went to like, the, the new high school and the vocational school, it made me proud. Like, they have a theater room, and it made me proud, so it's kind of a bittersweet thing. But I will say, um, that when I toured the middle school here, I remember thinking they need a new middle school. Like, I remember, like, there was some cla- the principal was showing me, like, some of the classrooms, and like, the way that they were having to divide that. The gym was cool, you know, but like.
That's where your biggest confrontation will come from the public, will be called, that has been so utilized, that area has been so utilized.
The middle school was our high school.
Well, I get, I, I know. And if borders open up.
It's forty, it's forty-nine, it's just forty-nine years old.
Is that how, forty-nine?
Uh, we'll be, we'll be next year, because it opened in seventy-three.
The first graduating class was seventy-five.
Seventy, opened in seventy-two.
That's before I was born, Larry.
There you go.
But if borders open up, I think that that could be, and hopefully they won't, but, I mean, you, you want to have, that's going back to the track and the tennis, and opportunities for students to want to come here. I would think that's not on.
This is the thing, with it, as far as the facilities plan, when was the last time you were a part of facilities plan? Last year, a couple of years ago?
It'll be due again when.
It'll be twenty nineteen, when we finished it.
So it'll be again in twenty-three?
It'll be in twenty-three, yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, our, it, things have changed so much from then to now, though, I mean, it's just, COVID happened and things changed.
The product of everything has tripled.
But we, 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 we're going to restart putting that LPC committee together and move forward and, and doing that a year early.
I think that's a good idea.
Ms. Jenny, could you bring us maybe tomorrow night to a meeting, uh, that list of the bonding?
Sure.
Just, I mean, we don't have to discuss it, just so that we'll have it, you know, for, just when things are due, so we'll know for the future references, so that whenever we do discuss this again, we'll have that reflection to look at.
And I, I will mention, um, Ms. Angie, I think you had asked about, um, a budget for SRS funds, for the number of staff, of the staff, two thousand and three compared to now.
Yes.
And that has been uploaded, um, in, on the draft, board reports.
Okay.
And I do have a question to that, what, then, uh, I don't know, we're calling human resource, where are we standing with that right now, as a board?
It's kind of on hold at the moment.
Okay, not discussing it tomorrow night, okay.
What was that?
The human resource position.
Wait, if, if you recall, the position itself has been approved, and then we need to have discussions about this hour.
Uh, I think I'm, I'm good, I'm. Anybody have anything else? No? Appreciate all of you for coming, Ms. Jenny, thank you for all your numbers, even the ones in the parentheses, you know. Yeah, I do appreciate you very much for sharing what you have with us, and gave us a lot of food for thought, that, uh, CD money, maybe, uh, you know, maybe some type of a plan can be presented or something, just to, um, I'd like to see everybody get on the same page with it, and just see, uh, if there is something that we can do that will benefit our kids. So, if nothing else, I just need a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor?